All right, then I'll go ahead and open up the commission with class order and start the rule call.
Thank you. Chair Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Jannelli?
Here.
Commissioner Soffler, here. Commissioner Laia?
Here.
Commissioner Lerner?
Here.
All right, good. And the next item is public comments and if you open up the public comments for items that aren't on the agenda, so if you want to bring something forward that's not on the agenda, you can come up and talk about it. Sometimes that leads to a discussion on further reading or you can highlight whatever you want. So I'll open up the public hearing for items that are not on the agenda tonight. And three or four hundred people have thought about having one, but nobody did. No, all right. You want to sit and talk about something other than what's on the agenda tonight? All right, and I'll close the public hearing and bring back item three, which is the approval of minutes. I didn't see anything on that that was different, so I don't know.
I got one word.
One word?
Yeah, on, uh, uh, when it's something I said, and I just got, I think it's just a word, not a typo. On the closed public hearing, ethical public hearing, on the third page of the minutes. Uh, it says, bust personnel choices, and they're really personal choices.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Hey.
Okay, now. If you're, that's your personal choice, you should do it.
I'll say. All right, move to second. If all those speakers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, pass this by, nothing. All right, so then we have some new business, and I'll just give the format of the new business. Uh, in this, we just group for all the new business. What we do is we start off with a staff report, it gives an overview of the whole discussion. Then we open the floor up for the applicant to discuss their points. And then we open up the floor for anyone else who'd like to talk and talk on that subject. Then we, after everyone's had their comments, then we close the public comment. And bring it back toward, to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So that will be the case for all the new business items. So let's start with, uh, item four A. And this is, this was continued, it was previously scheduled, it was on the school master plan for the schools. So we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. So tonight you're being asked to accept the two thousand sixteen annual master plan update for Menlo School. Uh, this is a process that is brought to you annually where the schools, the private schools, bring their master plans to the commission to just kind of give an update on the happenings and any expectations that the community may be looking at in terms of implementation of any master plan items identified for upcoming year. So, um, with that, the master plan is broken out in a series of different topics having to do with land use, circulation, parking, enrollment, the different facilities that they've identified that they may be developing either now or in future. Trees and other hours of operations, logistical type of information. Uh, so as noted in this update, uh, there is one component in what they are calling their Phase Three improvements, which is a performing arts center that's been identified as construction in the near future. They're not targeted for anytime in the immediate future, but I, uh, and let me preface all of this by saying that we do have representatives here from Menlo School who'd be able to answer any specific timeline questions that the commission may have, or any specific components as it relates to the status quo of the operational day of days that are going on right now at the school. So jumping back into what they're happening right now, uh, in terms of implementation of their master plan. Um, there's an addition right now with their stent hall, so in the center mid-back of the property there. Um, it's a ground floor addition, it's about seventy-five hundred square feet or so to the rear of that structure. Uh, they're also doing additions to that same building, um, at their third floor. There is a small, what they're calling a technology services building. It's about a little over five thousand square feet. That includes a basement, also under construction. Um, and as I mentioned previously, their identified performing arts center is targeted for construction sometime in the relative future. The carton field improvements are currently on hold. Um, they're, the school is working, sending some environmental and neighbor issues out there, working out currently. Before they would come back, that particular item will be coming back to you at the time of the fall most of the time, so. Um, part of the master plan is an annual report of their required TDM, or transportation demand management program that they are required to implement, implement to help reduce the amount of vehicles that are coming and going, um, from the facility. Uh, part of their approved conditional use permit that requires this, what I'm going to call it TDM program, um, allows the town to retain the services of a third-party professional transportation consultant. Uh, the town has commissioned Hexagon Transportation Consultants to give that, give review. Uh, and in summary, Hexagon has concluded that the school is in compliance with the requirements of that TDM program. They're either meeting and or, well, I would say exceeding it, but they're actually lower than the levels that they were, um, identified to have passed at. So with that, um, again, staff is recommending that the commission take the annual update and accept it as presented. And again, as I mentioned, Menlo School has a few representatives here who can help with any questions that we have.
All right, great. Now, we don't have our comms set up on the podium, is that, uh, do we have a microphone up front right now?
Yeah, we can just, we just roll that over. I can have the computer up, so maybe we can just use the computer until it's time.
I just want to make sure that they get captured on the record, otherwise.
Should be capturing the room, but let's, we can speed it up.
That's good.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we don't miss anything. Any questions for staff?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Don't let that thing heavy, or heavier than you are.
I think they want to keep it, well, they want to capture.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, that's good. Why don't you put the mic up here, he might have some notes. Just want to make sure everybody's comfortable and that they, we heard on stage. All right, good. So we'll go ahead and start with the applicant.
Uh, I'll kick us off. Commissioner Lerner, we have a ma, I'm Thanh Healy, I'm the head of the school. Um, and I'm in my fourth year at Menlo, and I'm a, a neighbor, live right behind the school, so, uh, I'm in the Victorian Manor neighborhood and enjoying being an Atherton resident.
For that information?
This is our, um, this is my fourth time presenting to this, uh, commission our annual update. We take this very seriously. Happy to answer questions if you've got them. We do have some things underway, as you heard in the, in the staff report. Uh, and we have projected, uh, a small project out on our athletic fields, on the baseball field that we control. Happy to talk a little bit more about that. We're in the process of submitting permits, finalizing plans for that. Uh, but maybe to sort of go over the, the overview and provide some of the highlights. We're going to assume this time, rather than going page by page, which we've tortured you with in the past. Uh, we're going to go, uh, and I'll have our director of facilities, Paul Gillick, walk you through some of the highlights, things that we think you might be interested in. So we're happy to answer questions on any aspect of the report, uh, and I'll be here to help with that. So I'll turn it over to Paul.
I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
On the report. Uh, and first of all, I'd like you to still hear that the tone of the report is getting more and more, uh, sort of neighborhood aware as that you've been here, so I really appreciate that. There's one, there's one word in the, in the whole report that, uh, that I wanted to ask you about.
Okay.
Followed it. And, and that has to do with, uh, something on page twenty-four. And that has to do with, uh, this, or it'd be, you know, wait till you get to that.
Thanks.
No, I just put the yellow marker on it so that it would be better. Right, it's on that next to last paragraph. And it says, "This includes infrequent scheduling of large events that end after nine P M."
Mm-hmm.
And I was in the impression that every event ended by nine P M. It's, it's just knit, knit, but that one word, and the fact that it says infrequent scheduling, kind of, kind of surprised me. Do you know anything about that one?
Yeah, so we, we hold an annual auction. Um, it's actually coming up this Saturday night. It's in our gym. Um, so it's contained, the sound, it ends after nine o'clock, so the, the parking lot will clear a little later than, than nine P M. Uh, but that's.
That's what it's like. So it's about accuracy.
It's basically one or two events a year that are like that, that are, that are one-offs, that are, we work hard to have that be contained and not outdoors. So at most, it's clearing the parking lot.
All right, good.
Fair question. Fair question. I'll turn it over to Paul.
My name's Paul Gillick. I'm happy to be here, uh, happy to be part of the community. Menlo School has worked hard, uh, with the culture to fit in with the community and be aware, uh, both with, uh, traffic and with neighbors. Uh, the, uh, the current projects we're working on is part of the central campus project. And it's putting the campus more centric towards the center of the campus. Um, keeping the light, noise, uh, traffic away from the neighbors. And that seems to be working well. Uh, we have frequent contact with the neighbors. They're like family, so it's, uh, we get the, uh, the good and the bad. And, and, uh, it's been a good run, uh, and they've been very patient with us on the construction, keep them up to date on what's going on. Um, we, uh, our designers had some clever ideas as far as how to mitigate parking and traffic. Uh, we, uh, gravelled the loop at the front entrance and made it in the parking for sixty cars. Enabled putting some, um, uh, portable trailers out in the parking lot and kept our parking count down. Uh, and with the aggressive, um, um, history that we've had with getting people on buses, uh, that's worked out very well to keep the, uh, the parking levels down. So, um, you know, it's, it's important to be part of the community and, uh, and working to keep the, the offending things that a school might do, the light, noise, and traffic inward and downs. We've worked closely with Neil, uh, on the parking, and he's been a great partner. I, I'm sure you're very proud to have him with you. Uh, I was glad to work with him. But I'm here to answer any questions. Uh, the, uh, the, the goal is to have, uh, the new facilities ready for students, uh, at the start of school in August. And, uh, and eventually serving, uh, lunches and catering, uh, right there at the basement of Stent Hall. Uh, that will, um, once again, focusing inward towards the center of campus. And it'll, it'll help our community, bring the student body together, uh, and, and I think it's a win-win for all involved.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
On page fourteen.
Fourteen.
Regarding, um, what I would call Douglas slash Stent Hall. Uh, it mentions a first floor addition and it also mentions an expansion on the third floor. That's a little puzzling to me because are these continuous, I mean, together? Is there a gap at the second floor? Uh, is that just a matter of phrasing? Can you explain what the plans are?
The, the third floor addition is right on top of the second floor. So it's just an extension upward, and it's in the back of the.
It was presently recessed at that point, now it's built out to the, okay.
Right, so it, it, um, there's probably not a good picture of the renderings.
We proposed, we had a plan in front of us that showed in the back, there's a second floor in the back, and then there's an extension they're doing on the front of, on the, on the, on the first floor. So it's actually two different sections of the building.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it, all I had was the verbal description.
Oh, okay.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. So we have, uh, we have, um, a classroom, a multimedia study, and a restroom, and we're just going to go on top of those.
We're not approving, we're not approving, that, that actually has been presented to us before.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and that was all discussed.
I presume it probably was.
They were updating us on the fact that activity's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So along the same lines with that construction project and the technology center, when that was presented to us, I know there was a lot of, um, uh, talk and concern from the neighbors, and you guys mitigated a lot of the concerns, which was fantastic. So I'm just wondering how far along the construction project is? If any issues have popped up with the neighbors with that particular project, the technology center?
So the, uh, we're, we're right now have it framed in steel, the new additions. Uh, the basement's been dug, uh, for the, uh, the technology center. Uh, it, and it's just one story above, so they've completed the floor, uh, the basement and the concrete below. The section that, behind Stent Hall has taken shape with the, with the steel. And, uh, we finally got out of the mud, hallelujah. Um, and, and started to really make some headway. Uh, and, and the completion is, uh, you know, August.
Okay, so.
I think, I think most of the concern was about the excavation.
Right, all, just the, a lot of the construction process.
And, and aside from, from the rain sort of messing with the schedule a little bit, um, the excavation, we didn't end up having to sort of do some of the, the, the drilling that we did when we did the gym. And there was a lot of the concern is how, how are you going to do some of the shoring and those sorts of things? And it just hasn't been an issue, so, so we haven't gotten neighbor concerns. We've been sort of trying to stay in touch and.
Right.
And adjust schedule, but.
Okay.
The movement of trucks, we've been running the, the double routes, the way we talked about.
Right.
That seems to be working pretty well.
Nice.
Did you, did you relocate the trash bin, or did you get anything on that? Because I know that would send a ship over one of the neighbors.
It is still in the same place.
Okay. Is it, any, is it shod, shodding or anything like that?
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that. We haven't done that part of the project yet.
Okay.
So, that's still to be done, still to be figured out. And we also haven't done, the other piece was some of the landscaping on, on the existing building. And that'll be a, a late-stage phase for us.
Okay.
And, uh, the baseball field, uh, work there, what are the details on that?
Sure, so, um, so we control our baseball field. I mean, we co-own it with the college, but, but effectively, we're the steward of the field, and so we have some control over that space. And we're putting in for, uh, a permit to adjust some of the fencing, um, around that. Actually move the fence a little closer to home plate and adjust some of the, reconfigure some of the seedings of better sightlines. And we'd like to do some fencing around the dugouts, uh, to make it a little safer for kids. We don't have fences in front of the dugouts right now. Uh, and then, and then to apply for, uh, the capacity to put some, uh, field turf on that field. So convert it from a natural, natural field to field turf field, so we can have, um, kind of more year-round play on it than we do right now and having to let it rest.
Ever seen a lot of that field turf coming from the, uh, the rubber cushioning to more of a cork, natural cushioning?
Yeah.
So I think they've had some issues with the rubber cushion in the past.
Yeah.
So are you, do you plan on doing the cork again?
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure what the fill is on the.
I believe it's going to be the Nike grind, which is the, is, is coated.
Coconut husk.
They got all kinds of things, yeah. We did the, we did the Nike grind, um, which is rubber but not tire-based on the Wonderlic field, and that seems to be working really well. So we'll probably do the same thing, although we, we haven't finalized the, the estimate yet. Yeah.
All right, and any other, any, any other questions? I, I, the only other thing probably worth, uh, talking about is the enrollment. I see it saying it's very stable, and that's probably a good indication of, uh, healthy economy as well as a good program. Uh, do you have any updates on, on that that we should highlight?
Sure, uh, so, um, we just finished the admissions season, decisions, letters went out last Friday. And, uh, and families have until Monday to, to get back to us. We typically under-enroll so that we make sure that we go to the, um, we, we hit our seven hundred ninety-five number. Um, that comes at a cost because we end up wait-listing more kids than we would like to. There are some great kids on our waitlist that we hope we'll be able to go to, but we, we've got an air on the low side. So right now, we're tracking just fine. Uh, my admissions office would love for me to tell you that we could use a few more spots, but, um, but we're happy where we are, and it seems to be tracking well. I'm not worried about hitting that number again this year.
All right, and there's a, there's a comment about the, the increasing staff slightly over the next few years. What is that about?
Just, uh, kind of enrollment, uh, shifts in the, in our upper school. We do a lot of elective offerings, and we try to staff to demand, so we've had a run on computer science over the last three, four years, and we've had to expand the number of teachers that we have in, in that department. So we're, we're talking about sort of numbers on the order of, of, you know, sort of less than five over five years. And it'll fluctuate, but I, I don't think it's going to add, you know, significantly to our traffic patterns or to our parking or anything like that.
Okay. The only other thing was the, uh, the target, the target on the, uh, on the percent of the fill of your parking area is eighty-five percent. And, uh, that brings up a question of, um, is the extra fifty percent there for something or not?
You want to speak to that, Paul?
No, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I believe that, um, we have, we have a, uh, a cap, and I think that we're keeping under it, but that fifty.
You are keeping under. You know, like, the question I have is that, as you're going through this process, you know, the, I, I would not want you to be stuck with the eighty-five percent figure. If you wanted to reduce the number of parking spaces to give you more open space, something like that, I think we would be amenable to changing that percentage, all right? So that it's the total number of spots that is the target, and, and then.
Right.
Whatever you need to do to accommodate, so if that created more space for like the location for garbage or anything like that, then, then we, then we could, I think, what I, I would, oh, I can see for me, that I would be very amenable to changing that percentage, so it does the same thing in terms of actual count, but, uh, gives you maybe, maybe more flexi, flexibility to space.
That's helpful. We'll take that in consideration. That's very helpful.
Yeah, don't want to, don't want to make the percentage the, the limiter.
Thank you.
As long as you're not using that fifty percent capacity anyway. Yeah, I can see if you're saying I need that fifty percent because sometimes you use that building, sometimes you use this building, or something like that, but, but that's all right. I'm sorry. I didn't want to say that. Uh, so, anyway, whatever, whatever would make sense.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, just had one more thing. First of all, um, you guys have done a tremendous job with the traffic management over the years.
Thank you.
And it's been a model for your neighbor's Sycroheart, which is, uh, I think you guys have just done a fantastic job.
I've got three more schools I'd like to have you talk to.
Happy to help.
Uh, consistently under the CUP maximum average, and it continues to kind of decrease. Although the last three years, it kind of stabilized.
Yeah.
So do you expect that trend to continue, the stabilization of those, and we've kind of seen rock bottom, what, you know, what you can do with that?
I do, we could probably take it down. Here's the, here's the shift that's happened this year that has our, we've been watching it closely this year. Uh, we changed our schedule in both the middle and the upper school. Uh, and we changed our schedule to have a later start, to get kids more sleep, uh, to be responsive to some of the mental health issues that are happening in our community. Uh, and we changed our schedule to have longer periods and fewer periods per day. I mean, it's not just sort of a later start, but there's a whole slew of shifts that we've made.
Right.
To try to make for a more sane academic schedule for the students. We don't quite know yet what that means in terms of, uh, our count in the window that's designated in our traffic demand management program. We seem to be tracking pretty well. Um, but I don't know, because this is a little bit of a tweak to the, to the dynamic, I don't know how to predict sort of future trends. If it was based on the last three years, I, I'd be pretty confident that, like, I think it seems to be stabilizing about where it is. We could certainly take it lower with a big push, but, um, but we're certainly maintaining.
Oh, that's good.
At a safe level. I don't know what's going to happen with this new schedule, so I, I'll, I'll be better prepared to answer the question next year after we've seen the year of data.
Yeah.
Our sense is it's going to be fine, and again, public transportation and, and the trains and, and the stipends that we give people to, to incentivize public transportation seems to be serving us really well as a school and in our admissions, and in terms of the families that we can reach to and the communities that we can reach into. So it's turned into a real boon for us.
Uh, it's been a good program, and I think it's a model this school should be, can follow.
We really have good options for buses, and, and I think that, you know, the parents, you know, if they have that option of not slogging through traffic and back to work. You know, I think it, I think it should continue to be popular as traffic gets worse.
Right.
Anything else? Anything else? Anything else?
No, I think that's it. We'd love to, I don't know what your, what your brown rules allow you to do, but we'd love to have you come see the new building. When it's finished, we'll do a big kickoff, and we'll, we'll send invitations and let you figure out who can come.
All right, good, yeah. We'll all show up at the same time. Avoiding Brown, Rick Brown issues.
Brown note.
Thanks for your time, Tony.
All right, yeah, I can have a hand if you want. All right, uh, then we'll go ahead and keep the public hearing open. Does anyone else want to, you know, comment on this topic? All right, and I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and skip back. And if, if, uh, nothing else, the fact that there's so much, uh, confidence in the room over your presentation is a good sign that you're doing a great job with the neighbors and, uh, uh, because these, uh, for those of you who haven't, uh, uh, this commission has been long, uh, these, these were, these are about the only excitement I had every year. So, 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 uh, I appreciate the fact that you've gotten it under control. It's a really great thing, and you're, you're a big factor in that, a very big factor. All right, any other, any other comments?
No.
All right, and we need a motion, uh, to, uh.
I will move.
Okay.
Planning Commission accept for filing the two thousand sixteen annual master plan update and TDM monitoring report.
All right, a motion and a second. Who seconded? All, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, good. All right, very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead. Just for those of you who did get here earlier, I did mention that, uh, that the applicant on one, uh, common road asked to be, uh, reschedule. So we, we go ahead, you'd ask to reschedule for, uh, April twenty-sixth, is that possible? Was our date?
Yes.
Yeah? All right, so continue, we would need a motion to continue. Is there anyone here to talk on, on that, on topic? I would, I'll go ahead and let you be on the record if you were here to talk on that. All right, no one's here to talk on that, uh, that, so I need to continue to say April twenty-sixth, motion?
And then that may continue five A to April twenty-sixth.
Load and second. Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is done. All right, and we'll go ahead with five B, a special structures permit for Seventy-Two Parkway Drive. And we'll start with the statute board.
Thank you, Chair. The request before you tonight is for a special structures permit to allow for a swimming pool with a reduced front yard setback at Seventy-Three Parkway Drive. The applicant's requesting the special structures permit to convert an existing chevron-shaped pool into a standard rectangular pool in order to better facilitate lap swimming and to install a roll-up cover on the pool. Um, Atherton Municipal Code Chapter seventeen point forty allows for accessory structures with a reduced front yard setback upon issuance of a special structures permit. And although not codified, the town does encourage, um, pool and spa covers in order to increase water-efficient landscaping. After carefully considering all potential locations on the lot, the applicant selected the proposed location due to a variety of safety, economic, and environmental factors. Um, in this location, the applicant can monitor the pool from key areas of the house as opposed to if it was located in the rear yard. And the left side yard is not feasible due to an existing garage and driveway configuration. Um, the applicant's proposing to use existing parts of the pool, um, to make it more economically feasible and to generate le, less waste in the demolition process. Um, the current pool is non-conforming with current zoning codes. Um, it's only setback a hundred feet from the front property line instead of the required one hundred twenty feet. And so this proposed pool further reduced that front yard setback to eighty and a half feet. Um, and the driving factor behind the reconfiguration of this pool was the surrounding five, um, heritage trees. And the applicant was, is trying to stay out of these, um, tree protection zones as much as possible. With the newly reconfigured pool, it's only, um, encroached into the tree protection zone of one tree, which the original pool already encroached upon. Um, and they're proposing to remove some hardscaping around the pool, which will actually be better for the health of the tree. Um, Sally reviewed the, our town, our borough Sally reviewed the project and prepared a memo for you. And she maintains that this configuration may be better for the health of this one twenty-inch oak tree. The pool equipment will be located in the existing pool equipment shed, which complies with all applicable zoning standards and regulations. And the project will comply with all applicable landscape screening, noise, and tree protection requirements. Public notices were sent out to all property owners within a five-hundred-foot radius, and staff received no public comment or concern about the project. Um, and I believe we have a member of the project team present tonight. At this point, I'm more than happy to answer any direct planning questions, and Sally can answer any questions about the trees.
All right, any questions to staff?
Uh, I'd just like to ask Sally if, if you want to add anything to what's in your report or if you have any other opinion on what we saw.
I sat down with the landscape, uh, architect or landscape designer, and I think she's here. And we talked for about thirty, forty-five minutes, and we, uh, hashed out a plan that made preserved all the trees on site, uh, i- if not makes it better for them. And, uh, I would love to see all projects go into this much detail of, you know, preserving all the trees. So I, I really don't have any other comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sally, one-page report, I mean, come on. All right, all right, any other questions? All right, good, and we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for, uh, for the applicant. Is the applicant here or a representative of the applicant? All right, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no. If you're satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Uh, no. If you're satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Alright, that's, that's pity. I like that. Alright, then any other, any other comments on this, on this, uh, item before I close the public hearing? I thought it was open and close of the public hearing, open and now close. Yeah, okay?
We're the closest neighbor.
Alright, come on up then. Come on up.
We would like to see these, uh, these, uh, drawings. We never, you know, from your description, it sounded like this was in the front yard.
Okay, it technically is, but it's not gonna be in the front yard, uh, like a drive, in front of the driveway or anything. On the record, we're showing the speaker, the, uh, map.
Are you saying the existing pool is in the, in the blue or what is that?
It's, um, the existing pool is this line right here, so it started here and then went back to here.
I see.
Yeah, so they're just gonna move it up like twenty feet, a little less than twenty feet.
Okay, so their circular driveway is over here and this will not be visible from the street?
Correct.
Okay, any other, any other comments? Okay, are we good? Alright, any other comments? Alright, good. Anyone else like to speak on this item? And I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for Discussion and Action Appropriate. I want, by the way...
I would just say, I'm just saying, I'm glad to Sally that the, and for both of you, that, uh, that whatever was worked out tree wise, that's always one of my priorities. I do get a little crazy when I find a question like this that comes up in a conversation that the neighbors weren't, it's a neighbor like this that's right over the driveway, right? That no one bothered to just jump over the driveway and say hello, by the way, here's what we're doing, and by the way, come on over and take a look. That bothers me.
And when we received, when we received this notice, Dr. Lipsen did go over there to try to get clarification before coming over to a hearing. But these people are not full-time residents, so we, they're never home.
Yeah.
Well, and it's not your issue, it's the, it's their issue. They're the applicant, you're the neighbor. If anyone's affected, I, it doesn't sound like they're there a lot, so it doesn't sound like there's a lot of impact and it sounds like you're okay with it. But I just think in the future, from a planning standpoint, I think we should absolutely require people to go talk to their neighbors and just make it so that every, you know, whether they agree or disagree. I, I know you can only do so much.
Yeah, I know, I know. When we went off to the site, it felt good, it was when the property owner, you know, personally, made that strong notification that they go outreach to neighbors. But we can certainly consider formalizing that. If the commission wants us to study that in terms of formal neighbor outreach, um, maybe another conversation to have, but certainly one that we can.
I'm not saying it as much on this particular topic tonight, it's because it sounds like these folks are, are not, it sounds like they're okay or being polite, saying that they're okay with it. But I just think in the future, it should absolutely, for anybody who's, who shares a, a line, there's no reason not to, because they can either talk about it early and get it out of the way or...
We're gonna talk about it.
Come back later. They're gonna talk about it, might as well get it all out. Before it comes to all of us, we're all sitting here going, what happened? And it's better on you guys too.
Alright. And I don't have the, the floor is not, I'll, 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 I'll go ahead and open it, but that's a, gotta, you gotta open it for me to do that, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do you have a comment?
You may if you want.
Well, I think that's an excellent idea. Uh, we had another neighbor who did a major re-landscaping, including hardscaping project. She came over well in advance, uh, showed us all the plans, explained when the workers were gonna be there and, you know, all of that. So we felt we were, you know, bought into it in a way.
Alright, and anyone else like to speak on this before I close it for the second time? That was more for them than for you. Alright, I'm ready to go to the public hearing. Try to keep it real. Alright, um, alright, anything else? Any, any other comments?
No, I would just, I would just echo what Randy said. It's, it, it is, one would hope it's common courtesy and it would be unfortunate if we have to, you know, put, put the suggestion in writing. But, um, maybe that's something we should consider.
Alright, um, the other, there's another, uh, thing I'll say for just from the staff level. I don't know how to check it out. Though this, the approach on this, this pool is interesting to me from the standpoint of using half of it and extending it. Uh, so it's pretty interesting, but it also makes me feel like there's a possibility of a crack in the middle of the pool. So, uh, I just, I, because when I think of, I think I got a pool and, and if you just said cut it in half and then go ahead and extend it in a new direction, that would not be a normal act of sawn concrete.
You don't typically see, I'm gonna call it pool additions.
Yeah.
Usually it's either their filling or their regrading and building.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. So I've never seen this done before. I can envision how it would be, but, I mean, I don't know how they're doing pools these days. Mine's really old, so it does have metal in it and things like that, so... Okay, I'll open up the public hearing one more time. Go ahead, you guys, and, uh, for me on that. Yeah.
On the record.
Yeah.
I thought I could just, I'll clarify if I can.
Good, thank you.
I am not the pool contractor.
Yeah.
I'm a landscape designer.
Yeah.
But I have an inside track, having watched the pool designer figure this out. So they're not actually recycling, you're swimming in the existing pool space, they're putting the new pool inside of the old pool shell.
Ah, there, right now.
So it's, it's all new pool, it has integrity, it's just by making the dimension a little narrower, they don't have to excavate and haul away and donate to the dump.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's... That makes total sense.
All this concrete that could stay.
Yes, well, landscape, you did a great job on that.
Your new public.
Now, now that makes sense to me. I'm sitting there going like, man, that's gonna be a pain. Alright, that makes a lot of sense and, and that would make, I'll, I'll note that for myself if we have to keep a pool. Alright, a- any other comments? Questions? Alright, then I'm, uh, I'm waiting for a motion. I'm looking for a motion.
I do that.
Alright, good.
I moved that the planning commission approved the special structures permit of seventy-three Parkway Drive based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report, subject to the conditions listed in the special structures permit certificate to allow a pool to be located within the front yard setback.
Move and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? And, uh, if you would go ahead and tell your plan that they might want to just outreach neighbors during the course of this process, because there'll be trucks and other things in there. We might be able to start off with an even better relationship, uh, going forward. Alright? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, uh, then we'll go ahead with, uh, item five C, which is, uh, the structures, uh, permit and heritage tree removal on sixty-seven Redwood Drive. I'll tell you all three of these locations, I'll tell you all three of these locations. Uh, all those, those streets are amazing streets. I mean, yeah, they're like their own little, little sort of paradise. Each one of these streets is just amazing. I mean, I, I turn a corner, but like, oh, this one is, uh, I think I'm right, I'm gonna see you Sally. So, wow, I was really impressed. Yeah, right, this street is amazing. Alright, so with that sort of context, I'll go ahead and start with the staff here.
Thank you Chair. There are two requests before you tonight. One for the removal of a forty-seven and a half foot inch bunnia bunnia tree and one for a special structures permit to allow for a pool with a reduced front yard setback. Um, these two requests are part of an overall site improvement plan for sixty-seven Redwood in which a new main residence, guest house, pool, driveway and fence are proposed. Um, I'll first address the heritage tree removal and then we'll later outline the special structures permit request. Um, the tree in question is located at the lower right-hand side or southeast corner of the proposed site plan. It's, um, forty-seven and a half inches in diameter, heavy and has a significant lean over the public right of way. The applicant's requesting its removal in order to construct a driveway leading to a garage, um, on that side of the lot. The location was chosen in order to mirror the driveway location of the neighbor at fifty-five Redwood and to increase the privacy between the two main residences. The applicant believes that this tree poses a liability issue as it's severely leaning and could fall in the public right of way or on a neighboring property. It also drops cones, which are sharp and heavy and could easily injure a human, animal or damage a car. The applicant's proposing to replace these, the, this tree with two sixty inch box native oak trees at the front property line, which exceed the town's, um, standard tree replacement requirement. Public notices were sent out to all neighbors within a five hundred foot radius of the property. Two neighbors have reached out and contacted staff in support of this request as they view this tree as a public safety concern. These letters can be found in attachments seven and eight. Our town arborist has reviewed these plans and prepared a memo in attachment three. She maintains that the town would not recommend planting a bunnia bunnia tree of this nature in such a small right of way planting strip, since they are heavy and have a tendency to lean. She is supportive of the request as this, as she described the tree in question as a wrong tree and the wrong place scenario. She is also supportive of the replacement plan. Due to the public and safety concern posed by this tree and a thorough tree replacement plan, staff is supportive of the heritage tree removal request. The second part of the request is for the construction of a swimming pool with a reduced front yard setback. The proposed pool would be three feet behind the front line of the main structure, as opposed to the standard thirty foot setback from the main residence. The location is proposed in order to preserve two heritage trees, one fifty-five inch oak and one twenty-eight inch oak located near the rear of the lot. The other side of the lot is not suitable for a swimming pool, even with the issuance of a special structures permit due to two existing redwood trees, one of a forty-five inch diameter and one of a sixty-five inch diameter. The size of these trees, coupled with the irregular shape of the lot, severely limit the potential locations for this below grade structure. The owner had originally hoped for a standard twenty-five meter pool, but has since reduced the length, length eighteen and a half meters in order to preserve all heritage trees and to comply with all other accessory structure setbacks. The proposed location would not impact the privacy of the surrounding neighbors as the pool is located and what's the rear yard setback of the neighboring property at one bar meadow away. Um, and they have a yard area over there and their main residence is sufficiently setback from the pool. The applicant is further proposing additional landscape screening both between themselves and the neighbor at one bar meadow and, um, between the pool and the public right of way. Staff is supportive of this request due to the restrictions placed on below grade development by the two heritage trees at the rear of the lot and the applicant's effort to match the character of the surrounding neighborhood and the steps taken to mitigate noise and privacy concerns. Um, so our town arborist has prepared an arborist report in attachment three, and she can answer any additional questions regarding the tree and I can answer additional planning questions at this time.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Sally, yeah. So the, uh, the two oaks that are proposed, the two sixty inch?
Yeah.
And you had specified, uh, planting those. Where were you thinking?
I specified them in the right of way, just because that's such a large tree that's coming out of the right of way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but technically they could be placed anywhere on the property, but they do have a large fifty-five inch oak in the middle of the property. So to add more oak trees back there with the, with the structures that are going in are gonna cause problems in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So I felt like the best place is in the right of way.
So, and I, uh, I asked Sally just before the meeting for clarification on that, is, it seemed like a redwood would fit in the area better to me, uh, so...
And it's redwood way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, it looks like, you know, there's a ton of redwood market around that, uh, around that, everywhere on that street, so... And that, they happen to be goes straight up rather than out, so I thought that might be a better tree type for that area. And you're gonna replace it because then you could, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're looking at the potential two over there, right, so it's, I mean, ultimately they'll become just as wide as the bunnia tree.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very... Yeah.
Yeah, the, the oak sort of seemed just way too wide for that lot to me, but, but we replace it with a big oak.
It's a very nice tree.
Well, we have the applicant coming up, so we can ask the other, uh, any, any other questions?
I have a question. Uh, how old do you think the bunnia bunnia tree is?
Um...
Hundred and fifty years of all these.
Maybe a little less than that, but maybe a hundred and twenty years, yeah.
And what was...
I don't know why they, why they planted it. We have two trees like that in the park. Um, but they're usually placed in parks or in larger areas as they are such large trees. I, I don't understand why anyone planted it there.
Yeah, but it's not really a good shade tree, except for the fact that you had it right in line with it, because, because it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't create like oak shade.
And it was never maintained, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting.
It's a really weird tree.
And so the, the cones, the pods, I, I looked at them, especially the dry out ones on the ground, and they look kinda sharp and like a, like a...
Yeah.
And they can get up to ten pounds, yeah.
But I thought I read in the neighbor's letters that they're heavily grown?
Yeah.
Well, because they're dropping from such a height, yeah, yeah, but it's more the velocity.
So, so, oh, okay. Okay, so it's not necessarily the density of the pod itself, but just the, the height from which it's falling, okay?
Yeah, not really the... Yeah, yeah.
Great name though. It's a great name for a tree. Bunnia.
Bunnia. Sounds like it should be a song.
You would come up with that.
I had one more question for staff and, and, and acknowledging the restrictions on the law and, and how things are proposed to be configured. My main concern was the neighbors at one bar meadow, who had to hear from them or there's been no concern expressed from them?
No correspondence from any of the neighbors.
Okay.
I thought they were too light.
Yeah.
But didn't I hear too light?
They're up in support.
Okay.
Of the tree.
Right.
Nothing for you, not to the pool, right?
I thought about the...
Yeah.
Right.
So no comments regarding the pool, so...
Support of the taking tree, tree removal.
Not just keeping the tree up to me.
Right, because I was just... The location of the pool.
Right, nothing regarding the pool.
Hello? Yeah, I, I'm hoping to use part of the first class group, one of the second. Yeah, yes, you're right. Also, alright, any other questions as staff?
No.
Alright, alright, good, then we'll, we'll open up the, uh, uh, the first and many times I'm sure, uh, uh, public hearings and...
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Malka Junaid. I'm the architect for the project. The landscape architect and the homeowners unfortunately are traveling. And so I'm representing them, um, but we didn't want it to delay the hearing. Uh, we did actually reach out and meet most of the neighbors, uh, wherever we could. Um, some of them we tried several times. They weren't home, but we did leave, um, messages with their, um, staff at the house. Uh, we did get some letters. We've talked with the neighbors on, uh, one, um, you know, right next to where the pool is. We've had no concerns on that. In fact, when we started talking to them, all the concerns came back to the tree. We didn't know that everybody was actually so concerned about that. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions you have regarding the trees. Um, that was just something we thought that the town would be much more comfortable with for the two oaks. But I'm sure the homeowners would actually be open to whatever the town or the arborist suggests. We would prefer two trees because even though it's a very, uh, unusual tree that we are asking to remove and it's not something pretty, we do believe that it'd be nice to have two trees around the driveway in front. It'll just, um, that street looks really nice if it's got the trees in there. So we'll be open to whatever you guys suggest.
Alright, good. Any questions?
I would like to ask our arborist, what is your feeling, sort of choosing between oaks and redwoods on that site? Do you have a feeling or do we have an option there that we might really want to consider?
Yeah, so since it's not an oak tree, they can replant with any tree species. I usually tend to go with oaks because we are losing a lot of oaks and we're known for oak trees. Um, but I have no problem with redwoods. Um, they, they have been struggling a bit with the drought. I feel like we're, we might still be in it. We don't know yet. Uh, so I don't tend to usually recommend redwoods and also the problem with, with shade that has come up recently. But I, I, I think redwoods would look great there, redwood way. No problem with that. It's a native species.
It's certain that they're on the side.
Yeah, it's a native species. It will get tall like the bunnia bunnia, so it's replacing it.
Yeah. So regarding the redwoods, would the root system be a problem with the location that you're thinking about?
Uh, no, they could do redwoods that close to the street. It would, it would be fine.
Okay.
As long as there's no gas lines there.
Yeah, as long as you're following USA lines, but...
Alright, good. Any other questions?
Overcome.
Yeah, any, well, she's still up, right, so I can...
We got others, maybe neighbors.
Yeah, a little bit, just I'm gonna make sure we don't, uh, any comments with her question, her... Alright, good, thank you very much. Alright, is there anyone else here to talk on the item? We just have fans, that's good. Alright, good, thank you. Alright, then I will, should I close the public hearing or not? Uh, we'll close the hearing and bring you back to the Commission for, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll bring you back to the, uh, Commission for Discussion and Action Appropriate.
So my only comment on this was, was I'm, I'm always, being that we're developers too, I'm always hesitant to suggest to people what their, what their, they try wanting, not wanting. So I, I agree, I mean, redwood, having driven it, it's beautiful back there, redwood would certainly be consistent.
Right.
But I, I love the fact that, I mean, who doesn't love these oak trees too, right? So I, I just, I, from a, from a property standpoint, I'm always hesitant to suggest something other than what that can ask, unless there's an issue with what they...
We recommend it.
We recommended it, so I don't think it would be a problem. Um...
I agree.
We could keep it as is and I can talk to them about doing redwoods.
I'll open the public hearing.
I'm so sorry. I just want, I just want the commission to keep one thing in mind, that the redwoods, when they grow, they grow very tall.
I just want the commission to keep one thing in mind, that the redwoods, when they grow, they grow very tall and straight. Oaks, when they grow, they're a little bit lower, larger, so, uh, I don't know how the neighbor across the street, because when we were talking to them, they were actually very happy that the tall tree was coming down because of the shade issue and leaning, so I'm just bringing that up, I don't know if that'd be an issue.
Alright, so, you know, I, I don't, I, I just didn't want to restrict the, uh,
Sure.
the applicant, uh, on, on the oak tree because of the way that it was expanded with the whole site. So as long as we don't restrict them on, so anyone else here to talk on it, okay, so I'll, I'll close, I'll try to clo- I'll try to close the public. Alright, uh, so that, that's the only thing with me is that, is I didn't want to restrict them to an oak. Alright, any, any other questions, comments?
No.
Then I will, we'll be looking for a motion if the commission so desires.
A move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit to allow for a swimming pool with a reduced front yard setback at sixty-seven Redwood Way.
You wanna take, let's take them two motions, let's do it in two sections.
Right.
Alright, so there's a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none of those, and no abstentions, five oh, and the second motion is.
Uh, move that the planning commission approve the heritage tree removal permit to allow for the removal of one bunya bunya tree at sixty-seven Redwood Way based on the findings listed in the staff report and subject to the conditions listed in the draft heritage tree removal permit.
Move then, second. Move and second, this, over to the committee on the second. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, none, and no exemptions, thank you very much for saying, alright.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Alright, so the next item is, uh, coming back to the discussion we have, the revision of the staff on the event of special structures permits. The ordinances. And, uh, this one, this one has two complexities, I think. One is just making sure we understand what their staff agreement is and what their contract is.
Yes.
And then the second part is all the paperwork that is associated with doing an ordinance change. So we just wanna make sure we get both steps very clear to us because they're, they're, the ordinance change is something we haven't done here in a while. We've turned it out with this group, so we wanna make sure we do it right because it goes to the, uh, the, the town council to review it and we wanna make sure that whatever we presented them, it was, what I would say is easily, is easily understood, uh, the process we use as well as verification or maybe as soon as we can.
Okay.
Because this is one of those ones that is easily rejected by not even, not even understood. Okay. Yeah, you were, you were a good spot there, it was, it was okay.
I'm sure he got it, okay. So, we, um, tonight are bringing back to the commission for consideration, formal consideration, a request to make amendments to the town's municipal code, the zoning ordinance, three specific chapters. Chapters seventeen point one five, which is our special structures permit ordinance, chapter seventeen point three two, which is our residential district R one A, and seventeen point three three, which is our residential district R one B zoning ordinance. Um, all of those changes pertain to discussions related to the town's existing sidewall and endwall regulations, which I will overview now. So, before we get into the revisions, I'll just give a brief history for those who are here, um, and just as a, as a refresher. So, the commission has had three study sessions on this matter. Um, the first beginning in May twenty sixteen, where staff brought, just brought up the conceptual idea of potentially considering changes to the town's sidewall and endwall height for main buildings. Um, given feedback that we've been receiving from primarily the development community as it pertained to limitations of the town's existing twenty-two foot sidewall height for main buildings as it related to more modern contemporary style architecture. Specifically because those types of architectural styles typically have a more flat roof design. So when you hit that twenty-two foot sidewall height, you're effectively at the top of the building as opposed to, we'll call it more traditional architecture that has a pitched roof. You have, once you get to that twenty-two foot sidewall height, you have more room to play, so to speak, because the roof angles itself upwards. So, following that main meeting, the commission-directed staff, yes, please bring back some ideas. Let's talk about some ways that we could potentially study, uh, making changes to the twenty-two foot sidewall height. We did that in August and December of last year. I'm gonna just jump to the last, um, meeting, which was in December of twenty sixteen. Um, at which meeting, the commission considered a series of potential alternatives to the twenty-two foot sidewall height. Um, I'll talk about what those were really briefly and what the commission, at the end of the December twenty sixteen meeting, directed staff to no, to not further study. Okay, um, the first being the consideration of a daylight plain ordinance. Without getting into the specifics, what that would have required was creating new regulation in the town that, um, effectively put a shadow on top of a building and said, listen, at certain angles, at certain heights, you cannot have the building go taller than that. Commission decided to not want to further study, do not direct staff to further study, um, potential inclusion of a new daylight plain ordinance into our existing zoning requirements. Uh, the other option that was discussed was what I would call a hybrid of our existing dormer ordinance. Um, there was suggestions by the architectural community to, um, potentially consider allowing a certain percentage of a building wall line to, I'll call it, pop up over that twenty-two foot maximum sidewall height as dormers are currently allowed to do under existing regulation. Um, that particular approach was also not formally directed to staff to consider in a more formal or further study. Um, there was discussion about creating new regulation that would distinguish different, uh, would distinguish different types of architecture based on the roof, roofing design of a building. So while not calling out modern or contemporary architecture versus traditional architecture, creating a definition based on a pitch of a roof that then in turn could allow for a subset of regulation to apply just to homes that had a specific roof pitch. One quite low, that would fall into a quote more flat roof design. Uh, there did not, there was not the consensus from the commission to create regulation that really distinguished one type of architectural style over another. There was direction that we wanted to create equitable regulation that did not incentivize one type of architectural style over another. Um, there was, lastly, discussion, um, well, let me back up. There was also discussion about completely removing the sidewall and wall height regulations in their entirety and just creating another way of limiting height of building. Um, that seemed to be a bit too open, um, uh, the, and, and complex. The commission did not direct staff to study that option either further. So, um, in summary, what the commission did direct staff to do in December of last year um, was to come back with some amendments that did not compromise the home's overall architectural integrity, but still attempted to mitigate some of the bulk enassing that was found to be a concern with some of the, I'm gonna call them more modern or contemporary style homes that are either, uh, have already been built in the town or that currently under construction. We had photos of some of those homes and I have those available too, if you want to, um, pull them up, I certainly can, just for reference points. Um, again, as I mentioned, that any amendment should not incentivize one design type over another. Um, that, when looking at the special structures permit process, which current ordinance allows for a home in the R one, main building, in the R one zoning district, to come to, to the commission to go, with a request to go taller than twenty-two feet. Um, what that requirement also triggers is the need for that area of, we're gonna call it, I'm gonna call it vertical offense, that, that, that section of the building that goes taller than the twenty-two foot maximum. Each foot that an individual wants to go taller, they need to increase the setbacks for the main building on all four sides of the home, at each level of the home, under current regulation. So there was discussion about maybe lessening the severity of that, um, particular regulation to have just the area of the building that wants to go taller than twenty-two feet, have that increased setback. Um, still keep the special structures permit process, still have it required to come to the planning commission for consideration, but again, lessen the severity or application of it so that you wouldn't have all four sides of the building just squished back in. Um, the amendments also were directed to staff to try to address the issue as it related to ceiling heights, internal ceiling heights and attic spaces for more contemporary style homes versus traditional style homes. The traditional style home with a pitched roof has afforded some attic area that goes above that twenty-two foot sidewall height to allow for mechanical equipment and other storage of, of units, um, whereas of course the flat roofed home does not act twenty-two feet. There was discussion of equitability again between, uh, regulations to not incentivize one style over the other. That, um, approach of equitability was also carried over for consideration to allow for special structure permits requests to not only be made for those properties in our R one A zoning district, which is the majority of the town, but also to consider possibly allowing that to, um, be an opportunity of request for the lots in our R one B zoning district, much smaller area. These are typically smaller lots, they're more narrow, sometimes longer, um, more in a, 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 a elongated rectangular shape. And you find them closer, the, the areas of our R one B zoning district closer here to town permit center, town hall, I should say, um, and along El Camino Real. Um, and so that, that's the summary of what has been discussed over the course of the, of the last, um, nine months now and where we are today. So, with all of that, I want to now go through what the proposed revisions are to the zoning ordinance that you're being asked to, um, formally make a recommendation to the city council on in terms of changes. So we talked about number one and I won't read it again, um, and I lumped these together to get ultimately to what that change is, okay? Um, so without attempting to, attempting to not compromise architectural integrity of a home, attempting not to incentivize one design type over another, there is the recommendation from staff to consider revising the special structures permit process as I previously described. Specifically, any requests that wants to exceed that twenty-two foot sidewall height for the main building only in our R one A zoning district could still do so. However, that ratio of increased setback of five feet for every one foot of vertical sidewall height increase would only be applicable to the area that is triggering the need for the special structures permit or requesting to go above twenty-two feet. Um, with that approach, staff's also finding that that could be a, a means of helping to mitigate the bulk and the mass of a home. Um, by doing so, we believe that most individuals who are gonna make that request are just going to apply that increased setback to that area of, of vertical offense as opposed to all four sides of the building. Um, what we found in the past, when it's been applied to all four sides of the building, is not an end home style that creates breaks or wall, breaks in the, or segmentation of the wall lines. It's just a squishing in of the entire building so that you still could have plain old view of first story stacked on top of a second story. By just supplying it to the area of the taller, um, request, you automatically, if the, or if the architect chooses to do so, stepping in a wall line, which does in and of itself create some break or relief in, um, in the structure. It also pulls back that taller section from any adjacent neighbor and or public right-of-way depending on what side of the house that taller section is on.
Oh, were you, were you here when we saw, saw the pictures of the houses?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, well, I was not here for December, except.
So let me pull, I can pull those up if you want.
Look this far too, just to make sure we saw them. Did you see them at, at one of the meetings?
Right, yeah, they.
Okay, good, good.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Molly, I did, I knew you could see the December, but I could remember you well in December or not.
Stephanie, have a quick question for you.
Yep, that.
When you talk about, um, uh, the setback ratio and, and you said just that area, how do you, how do you define area? Is it just that whole side of the house, is it?
It would be any portion of the building that exceeded a twenty-two foot maximum sidewall height, so.
So just that section of the building would be setback?
Just that section of the building would be setback. Now, if it's going to be a flat roof, that section is not just gonna be on one of the planal sides of the building. It would really need to be on all four sides. Um.
Or three sides.
Or three sides, depending on how, eh, the overall design. But if I was to stand at any of the four sides of the building, front, side, rear, even if the walls are in and out, we consider that all one planned view. So, anything that's taller than twenty-two feet from that planned view would need to be stepped back.
Okay.
Again, for the R one A district.
Right.
And I'll get into the R one B
Okay.
and what that means or what that would look like for that district, um, in a moment. So the other topic that we spent a fair amount of time, um, at the December study session was this issue of, um, we call it the, the inequality of an attic space that either can allow for, as I mentioned, inclusion of mechanical equipment for the home or for in taller internal ceiling heights in different sections. Um, let me see if I can, I don't think I can make this any bigger, maybe I can. So this drawing was what we used, whoops, um, was what we used for that discussion. So with the flat roofed home, this twenty, this is, this, you can see the cursor moving here, this is that twenty-two foot maximum sidewall height. So you can see, even if this is roof element here, they don't create themselves the ability to, if I'm gonna come over here with the traditional style home, here's your twenty-two foot from outside of the wall. And you have a pitched roof and you have, maybe you have some kind of eve detail, but maybe you don't, maybe the pitch just comes down. It doesn't really matter for purposes of what they're getting to accomplish inside the house. So come on the inside of the house here and you can go all the way up to twenty, thirty feet. Um, and again, that gives you the ability to house mechanical equipment. It gives you the ability to have taller ceiling heights in the, in the room here, but still look like twenty-two feet from the outside. So, we outreach to the architectural community, um, staff that is, and, um, unfortunately, we weren't able to get any suggestions from them on a way to try to equalize the opportunities here. The only option that we could come up with that seemed to be feasible while keeping in mind all of the other elements of design, um, lack of trying to incentivize one over the other, was to increase the sidewall height for homes with flatter roofs that basically just let them go taller and if you want to create attic space, you certainly could. But then there would also be the scenario where perhaps they wouldn't wanna use that as attic space or taller internal ceiling heights. Um, so, with that, the approach of revising the special structures permit seemed to be the, um, most conservative approach that staff could come up with, that were recommending, that also was attempting to keep in mind all of the more, um, stylistic direction approaches that the commission had discussed back in December.
Which means we, we, and I, I agree with you, so we don't address this in any other way than whatever is above twenty-two feet, we back, we, we, we only require that section, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good solution for me, I think that. We, particularly since we couldn't come up with what we may have, because we, we played around with a lot in December. And although it makes sense. around with a lot in December, although it makes sense, it still would, and maybe we would do the raise in height without automatically optimizing it.
The other part coupled on to that was if you were to raise the sidewall height, how would you distinguish?
Yeah.
That increase on?
Right.
A traditional style home versus a contemporary style home? And again, the only way that staff could theorize would be to create a definition. And then we felt that that was counterintuitive to trying to not incentivize one design type over the other.
But then we also get a concern from the picture place that's saying, why'd they get 29, why didn't they get 28? So we create more sort of issues by coming back and.
Right.
Yeah.
Zoom out here.
The thing about my thought this so far is that we're, if you want to talk about this subject, we looked at it from a lot of different angles, so we've got a lot of people involved in it.
Okay, so what these revisions also don't do is extend any kind of change to any accessory buildings or structures. We did talk about that, I don't know if it was actually at the December meeting, I think it was more at the prior meeting in August, and there was not consensus from the commission to look at allowing for increases in sidewall heights for accessory buildings or structures. What the suggested amendments do do, lastly, is apply the same special structures permit revised process that I just described to properties in the R1B zoning district, again, just for the main building. Now with that, it's important to note that existing ordinance for properties in the R1B have a lower maximum sidewall height than properties in the R1A. R1A has a 22-foot sidewall height, R1B has an 18-foot sidewall height. So what staff is proposing in the spirit of equitability is to still allow that process to happen for the R1B at the same ratio of, for every one foot that a lot in the R1B wants to go taller than 18 feet, they still would need to increase by five feet. But their maximum would be 26 feet as opposed to 28 feet in the R1A zoning district. Again, keeping those ratios equitable to existing regulation. That's the attempt.
Sounds pretty hard. What's that term called in design?
Yeah. The lots are narrow, so if there was a lot that would come in, again, it would be assessed on an individual basis. There are some R1B lots, there are a few, I know that I've talked to folks and seen the lot configuration where they are, they, sometimes they are a bit more narrow. For the majority, I have to say though, they are substandard in width relative to an R1A lot and can be longer in depth.
Which could make it so that they put one section higher than the other because they have a front and back setback to use, and it doesn't make the thing any wider. So you couldn't get a deck or something out there.
I'm not going to say for every project that we see coming in, but certainly for the majority, either in the R1B or the R1A, even if they're not requesting the sidewall height, typically houses are building out to setback line.
Right.
Unless there's a tree involved, or sometimes it's just a design preference. But I will, I can say confidently, the majority are, you're pushing out to the maximum setback.
If we didn't do anything in the R1B, is that not equitable given what we're doing in the R1A?
It would be, it would be status quo, because right now, R1B doesn't have the opportunity to make the request.
Right.
So a revised request is.
Yeah, the whole premise that we did this for, I, the whole premise, I hoped we would do it for, to make your, their lives simpler and potentially less combative down at the planning department. So if we're only adding now an R1B, an element that does make it more combative, I think the last thing we want to do is have that. I know where I'm not at this step, so.
No, I'm sorry, I agree.
I just want to be really careful that, that we're not overlooking the R1Bs because there are a number of them in town, but I also don't want to create a, you know, unintended consequence.
Right, but is it a self-limiting thing where it's so difficult?
Yeah.
To do that on the R1Bs that maybe it's a self-limiting thing, so you, they do have the opportunity on paper and through the process, but maybe it's limited because it's like, set it back or something like that.
Yeah, theoretically, you could let you want one foot higher ceiling for effect and put yourself back five feet on the backyard.
Not for work.
Yeah, it's not for work.
It's very difficult for a lot in the R1B zone currently to even come in with a second story that has a flat roof.
Yeah.
Just because of those minimum, well, I guess I'd call them industry standard minimum ceiling heights that we're assuming to find in this day, maybe that changes in the future. Certainly you can have a second story easily created with a pitched roof design, but we've really, and I've had folks that I've met at the counter and gone through this, and what that allows itself to is smaller.
Right.
Floor plates, and really, then you're really getting a box.
Right.
Because they're, they're trying to get the most bang for their buck, so to speak.
I just worry that an architect looks at this thing in R1B and goes, none of these guys were architects, they got all this input.
Right.
They're, they're going, like you said, they're going to be creative by their way, which is their job, but I just want to be careful we don't.
Yeah.
No, but the argument against that provision for the R1Bs is that with the proximity of the lots, any height increase impacts the neighbors a lot more than it does on the R1As.
Yeah.
And that's, I think that's a huge consideration.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think we need to do it for R1Bs personally, but, but it was just one of those things that we were looking at, so I don't, I don't see, I think it's more, I think it's more difficult for the, for the town councils to see the advantage of that too, because there's, we're always being held out for that, but other people have come to us on the other lots, right?
True.
So we, with the original, the dressing, what we're seeing, what was common, the issue for staff and for the designers and things like that, that's where it came from. So, yeah, we can talk more about it when we're done, but let's go through, let's go through like the.
Okay, thanks, all right.
Yeah, that's okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah, the last point was just again, what we're not proposing, which I think I already summarized, which was not to propose creation of a new daylight plain ordinance or allowing building heights to protrude up at a certain percentage, whatever that defined percentage may be. We looked at possibly 50% of the linear length of a wall, allowing that amount to pop up, and so that was taken off the table.
Right. And I think what we want to talk about, and what we're done about this, is what we don't have to clarify with the presentation, and that actually gets more to use. They just go, we talked about daylight plain, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I sound like. So without, without really having a third section to go through it, now we can think about that. So if we come back to our three fight two, which is 123 rather than 127, then we say, okay, we, we came down to the fact that we're looking at this, this, and this, and by the way, we have a lot of other things, but you know, but this is what we, this is what we focus on, and then it gets a lot cleaner to talk about.
So yeah, I wanted to give that perspective to, to you, since we had had that really meaty discussion at the last meeting, to give a basis of why we are proposing what we are proposing, so.
Let's go through the proposal then.
Okay. So the.
Why it don't matter if they all.
It's in the, it's, there are no slides, they're in the staff report. So we are proposing amendments to three chapters of the municipal code, like I mentioned previously, and maybe the easiest way to do this is actually looking at the attachments, because I made the changes in strike through, so you can actually see what those changes are, so.
Exhibit A.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so there will be an exhibit A to attachments two, three, and four. So we can start with exhibit A of attachment two, and these are changes to the special structures permit. And all that needed to be changed in the context of the mindset that I just described would be what's noted, hopefully in red if you have color, and that's the inclusion of the R1B, and that seems like that point may still be up for discussion, but that would be the only change to the special structures permit ordinance of the municipal code if it's decided upon that falls out of this discussion.
Right.
Okay, so that moves us to attachment three, exhibit A, chart changes to the R1A.
So it would be listed as R1A, right?
Correct. I'm sorry, unfortunately, these aren't page numbered, but if we're in exhibit A of attachment two, it would be page three, should be in red text, it's the page that prefaces that the dormer images. And so what that change would be, as noted in red text, is specifying that the standard setback ratio increase of five feet would be measured only to the area that's requesting the increased vertical height.
Yeah, so, and how does that exclude dormers?
Because it's still defined as sidewall in that section, and yes.
That makes sense.
Yep. It's just providing more specificity as to where we're measuring sidewall to, to trigger that special structures permit process. So that's it for the R1A, and that moves us on to attachment four, exhibit A.
And that would be only if you did R1B.
And that would be only if you did R1B, and that language is going to mirror the language of the R1A, as we just discussed in terms of measuring the vertical sidewall.
I want to see your red mark, I don't know.
It's purple, I don't know why it's purple, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
All right.
So taking a step back, and in summary, staff is requesting that the planning commission consider amendments to three specific chapters of the town's municipal code, as noted in the staff report, for the reasons as described in the report and as we've been discussing.
So just for clarity, the first exhibit, exhibit A for the special structures permit, for item A where you have the red.
Yes.
If we excluded and R1B there, if we did that, then we would, that would automatically delete that last attachment.
Correct. If you decided to not extend this opportunity to the R1B, then what you would be doing, you would, I think you would, you would just be making a recommendation to the council on amendments to one chapter of the municipal code, which would be the R1A chapter.
Right. All right, any other questions with staff? We probably left yet, we're finishing our discussion, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna hang on here.
Okay, all right, and I, I agree, I think, I think the R1B portion might end up being more confusing, it would be helpful, so I'm glad we went through the whole process on that. But I'm sorry for you to hear the whole process, but, but it helped us get to the point where you felt, I think, feel comfortable with making anything happen.
Right, and I agree with that 100%, and as I've sat here and thought about it, you know, any height increase on the smaller lots, it really affects the, really, so any opportunity to do that is, I think, will mean a whole can of orange.
Right, I agree, I agree. And, and again, it goes back to the idea that nobody's beating our door down on that and not, not lots size right now, whereas they were coming to us a lot on the other types. And it's not clear that even this change would make a change to the boxiness of the abilities we get, but it does provide some new aha, maybe, in terms of the thinking of the designer.
And a, you know, perceived flexibility, and I thought we heard from a number of architects that they felt very constrained by existing regulations.
Right, right. Yeah, because usually what would happen is that people would, people in the sections that they didn't want to have to trigger, they would just slap on awnings and say, okay, fine, I don't get to, so they would basically feel bad about their design.
Yeah.
Because if they just, okay, fine, I'll make this English tutor. So any other comments?
I just appreciate Seth using a scalpel instead of an axe.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, let's ask any more, any more questions with staff right now?
Uh, no, I think Seth, I just have some comments of my own to make.
All right, good, so I'll open up a couple here.
I missed the last meeting in December, so, and I thought there was going to be some discussion tonight, but it sounds like that ship has sailed, and I think it's a great solution, and I commend planning commission for taking it on and staff for working with architects and community to pull it together, I think you did a great job, so please repeat.
Are you comfortable with the R1B exclusion?
Yeah.
Are you an architect or resident or both?
Builder, we have an architectural branch that redesigned a spec house, this was.
Do you want your name for the record?
Sean Owen, Owen Homes, yeah. So, so we're kind of the culprits in raising the issue, and I know it's been raised multiple times before, but we talked to a council member who brought it to light, so I think it's great that you guys brought it on and came up with a really good solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no one else in the room, so I'm going to close the public hearing and let you all come back after I close it.
He can't just do it once.
I'll put a public hearing. Close the public hearing. All right, okay, any more discussion? Do you have something to say?
Yeah, as the newbie here, this strikes me as, this whole discussion and proposition is predicated on the fact that there's a lot of new contemporary and modern homes going in, in the area, and we are trying to accommodate that because the architects and the property owners are, you might say, demanding it, or at least requesting it. However, I'm from the old school, and I think a giant house of unusual proportions does not belong in the town of Atherton.
Right.
I think this proposal goes against our general plan. First of all, we are encouraging contemporary and modern design by even suggesting this. And secondly, we're concerned about the streetscape as people drive by and walk down the street. I see them in our neighborhood, I'm sure you all see them around town, these big funny things that don't have a side or front or a back, they're just a conglomeration of boxes and kind of a look at me structure. I think homes that are too big for the lots, which this could become if we increase the allowance proportions, begin to deserve in terms like McMansions and statement homes and that kind of thing.
Let me, let me, so let me show the, can you pull up some of the pictures?
Sure.
Okay, the reason that, so here's what we're trying to get around, right? The, the way that's going right now is that they are coming in and saying, okay, fine, I get to, if you make me do this, I'm going to do the whole thing like a box, all right? And several of them, so this is, this is one near me, so this, this is one that's as much as on the, on the street right behind me, and go to the next, go to one of the other ones right there. This one is one that's complying with our plan right now. Now, they, they basically said, okay, fine, just squish it back and make it a, make it a, make it a box. Go, keep scrolling, and it's another view of that same building. It looks like, it looks like, I don't know.
Star Wars.
Yeah, well, what's his name, he's, he's a guy designed and died in Minneapolis, you know.
Prince?
Prince, it looks like Prince's compound, it looks like Prince's compound, Prince's compound. All right, now this one, yeah, good, good on the trick. All right, this one, this one went, said, okay, fine, I'll, I'll go ahead and do some, some variation in the leveling. So he basically tried to come up with a different look, you know, so they'd have a box but not a box, and a box, keep going. The, the idea here is that our current design, this is, this is what it looks like, it looks like an industrial building, it looks like, it could, it looks like it'd be an Intel building. What we're trying to come up with is a way for them to not feel like they have to fill up the whole space if they don't have to, because they say, all right, if I'm going to set it back, if I, you're going to make me set the whole thing back anyway, watch this. And so what we're trying to come up with is if they just come up with a way to get, get basically the requirement to push back the section they want tall, they'll create some variation. That's where it all started, because I started going around the neighborhood, and these are all pictures I took, right? And, and, and basically, it's just, basically shows that what's going on right now is really getting us to a point where we're getting boxes.
Well, I think each one of these is uglier than the next, but that's just my opinion. And if you allow them to make them taller, you're just going to have a tall on them.
It's not tall on this, this is, this is our current, this is our current.
You're talking about increasing the sidewall, first of all, well, the box, it's easier to add a sidewall.
They increase the sidewalls on these, and the way they've done it, they did the setback requirement. They increased the sidewalls on these, and the way they've done it, they, the setback requirement, okay?
Oh, alright, yeah.
So, we're not, we're not changing the spec on this, we're just saying that when you do this, you don't have to do, if you don't do every, every sidewall, uh, the, if you wanna have a variation, like that one with the flat roof, uh, on, on it, if you wanna do variation, we won't charge you to do the whole building that way. Alright, so what's happening is, is, go back to the one with the flat roof, uh, that's, uh, God, they, they got awnings. Uh, I, uh, they're farther down. That one, okay, so, this one had to comply all the way around the building for that height of that one section, alright? So that one section caused them to have to pull the whole house back. Now, they felt like they could make that, their design work. All the other ones said, well, if you're gonna knock, if you're gonna cause me to put the, uh, to set it back that much for the whole place, I'm just gonna build the whole place. So what we're trying to do is incentivize this type of modern design rather than the other ones. And right now, this, this, this developer just decided that they couldn't stand the idea of, of having just a big box, so they said, okay, even they're gonna charge me for that one section, and they, this is one that came before, they said, you're gonna charge me for the entire house for that one section? I can't believe that. And so that's where the, that's where this, that's where this design discussion came from. All the other ones, that, so their, their, their interpretation of the rules is, they had to, they had to do the setback for that one section for, for the whole house, and all the other ones did too. So we are not increasing the height requirement of any of them, we're just saying we're gonna give you a break if you don't make it all the same height.
This sounds like blackmail, and it sounds like they're shitting themselves in the foot. If I say, well, y'all, we can pick up the box to the-
Well, but that's our, that's our current code right there, that's what our current code gets us, we're encouraging. We're, we're, right now, we're encouraging to build a box.
That, that's surprising to me that they would do that.
No, well, it, it isn't, because what they're doing is to say, if you're gonna charge me for any section that's above, I'm gonna make the whole section that way.
And we're, well, as I started out by saying, we're encouraging modern and contemporary. And if, if you weren't having this discussion about modern and contemporary, just colonial or whatever, I don't think this would be a problem.
Well, see, here's what's happening-
Because of the already grotesque style and the specific, we're not supposed to be encouraging specific architectural style.
More of these coming forward than, than the other type, and that's what we're trying to address. 'Cause this is what our current code gets us, alright? It says basically, if you wanna go up, uh, and then left side, if you wanna go up on the left side, we're gonna charge you for the whole building, uh, for, for the setback on all buildings, so they say, okay, fine, I'm just gonna do the, the whole thing. By allowing them to have only a penalty for, for the stock height that's, that, for the section that's higher, they won't, they, they actually will see a footprint that's flatter, because they're saying I can use more space now, because here's what's happening right now, they're saying, here's the size of my lot. If I build that one section like this, I can only have a footprint like this, because I have to pull it all back in. What we're saying is that, if, now, if you don't, if you're only being charged for the one section like that, we will let you have more of a footprint, because you don't have to take this and pull it back too. So we're saying make your thing flatter, and for the section you want higher, you can, you will only penalize you for that section.
But pulling it away from the view is a good idea.
Yeah, only the, but they will-
The whole thing?
Yeah, well, they, we can't pull, but that's what, that's what our current code gets us, and, and there's, I, I only took a shot of of seven or eight different of these, but I can go around, I can show you twelve of these easily, fifteen of these. And that's because, it's because we're not allowing the architect any relief from a requirement that if you want me to go box, then I gotta, then I, then I got a problem, because if I go, what's happening right now, if I, if I have a ten-foot section that I wanna have high, and I have a five thousand square foot place, I have that, that ten-foot section is requiring the five thousand square feet to be squeezed in by five feet all the way around. And so they're saying, well, if I've got five feet all the way around, they're gonna charge me, then I'm gonna get five feet all the way on top right now, and that's what creates the big, that's, that creates a big box. By saying, if I, we're only, we're gonna have you move that ten-foot section back, then you, we're not gonna make you move all the other section back, so there you get your five feet all the way around. So, we're, we're deliberately, if this guy had been told that he didn't need to, that he could've had tw- uh, ten more feet on the left, I'll bet you anything we wouldn't have gotten that box.
I agree.
You, you're-
I agree.
And, and that's, that's what we're saying. The reason we're getting this design is because our, our, our current requirements force that design.
We don't have design review, and I think that's part of the, that's part of what you're not saying.
Yeah, that's a valid way.
Yeah.
Well, can I, can I comment on this? I don't disagree with you, though, I'm not a big fan of modern homes, but, but no matter what we do, we're not gonna change this. We're not gonna change somebody who wants to come and live in our town, which is beautiful. I agree with Eric. By doing this change, it's gonna make these homes more creative than what we're getting here. As you know, design changes over time, this isn't gonna be forever, but this is the case.
I think too, these are gonna become one of the houses, especially like that.
And they might, but I think-
If that goes away, who's gonna buy it?
But where I might say that I don't like this particular style of home, or it's not for me, I think it's dangerous for us personally to have our input be what our style of home is versus something else. Because then we're gonna start, you know, then it's, let's attack every style, because no one's gonna like every style. I think the best thing we can do is encourage these guys, one, let's make planning your, their jobs easier by not having these conflicts, but two, let's get more creative homes. I think it adds to it. We get a lot of landscape screening, we get a lot of other things going on in these, it's not gonna be perfect, but I think from the standpoint of changing the style, I think it's gonna make them much more interesting homes, even if they may not be personally available.
And by the way, this code applies to all different types of homes, so if the pitch group home, uh, has, has an interest in, in having a taller sidewall for the effect of it, they have to comply with this too.
Sure.
Yeah, so, so it's not just, uh, a particular design, but what our current design, what our current design, uh, criteria is, uh, is, is doing right now to this, this, this particular design, and these ha- these houses are not designed primarily for the outside. When you go inside, they're dramatic. They have huge tall ceilings, they have a lot of glass, and a lot of-
But the outside is the streetscape that everyone sees also, when you go by the ones that I've seen, there's, uh, usually there's a wall or a fence or a hedge, so that all you're seeing is the top part of the house anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and that, sure, that's pretty, looked at first star.
And now, we're back to the other way, and that's exactly why I'd, I'd rather have more of these, uh, going, going on, because that one, we, even when they had it, you get, you get a softer feel to it, alright? And that's, that's what we're trying to allow. This, this, I remember this, this one very clearly, because I was on the, on the commission one meeting.
What street was that on?
Where I was driving. I, I don't, I'll have to look at my camera to tell you. I, 'cause I knew, I knew the, I drive, I drive this way on the way to different, uh, things, and I remember this one, but, uh, it, it's, uh, uh, what is it on? It's on that major drag, it's, uh, it goes out, uh, all over, these are all on the same street, by the way.
Stockbridge?
What?
Stockbridge or, uh, it's Stockbridge?
There's a couple of, like, I, I'm on at night, and there's just-
Yeah, that's it, Polley, Polley's, yeah.
What's on Polley's? Yeah, Stockbridge has some pretty dramatic ones, like one in particular, the St. Davis House, it's beautiful.
But that's where this came from. The, the opposition, the, the, the choice of this design versus those other ones, and I started seeing these boxes go up, and I go like, and, and I would go, I'd go to staff and say, how, how does this get approved? And it's, it's approved because they said, said step the back, or whatever.
And many of the people that we know that are architects, they're, they're building these to kind of hold in their nose. They don't, they're, they're not, this is not what they wanna do, they wanna make them creative, and they, they're named some forever. Last thing they wanna see, things to look like, they would've looked like that.
They've come here repeatedly and said, if you just penalize me for this section, why don't you just penalize me for this section, because I can do more with it. They've said that to us in, in, in sessions. Yeah, I say, I can't believe you're penalizing me for the whole, the whole house for this one section. This, this, that, that did, and they wanna have it anyway. But, but everyone, everyone who's come to us has said exactly the same thing, I don't wanna do this whole thing, but you're forcing me into it.
Well, I think we all have our strong opinions already formed, and-
Well, keep in mind, we, we-
If I'm the only one with, we're both know or staying, it'd still go through, but it's okay, I just have trouble signing my name to it.
Well, here's the thing, here's the thing that is, is, is sort of telling to me, alright? We've been studying this for nine months.
Yeah.
Alright, so we started off with, I don't know, I, I don't know what the issue is, but we did, keep on having this, and the staff came to us and said, you know, this creates such thrash for us.
Yeah, I realize there's a, other thing.
And, and so what happens is, it, these other buildings, this one came to us, because this person contested it. All those other buildings didn't. None of them came here. Alright? Yeah, and none came, no, it's not a strike, they didn't have to, they stepped it back five feet.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're complying. So the only one that came to us, they ended up the way we wanted, is one that was trying to get an exception. And that's when I went out and started taking photographs. I said, wow, you know, and then I started driving up down the street and seeing these compounds.
Yeah, yeah.
And you understood why?
Well, the reason I, the reason I bring this up, because this is exactly the process that I think that the, the town council's gonna go through. Because there's been so much stuff about sidewall and everything else, they're gonna go through the same thing. So, uh, I mean, it's, it's one of these things where getting, getting the nuance of this is really, you know, it takes time. Because we, we did, we did three meetings on it, something like that, and we had, and for two, two or three meetings, we had like five architects here. And they're going through like, here's, here's what, here's what we would do if this, here's what we would do with this, but since we can't, this is what you get. So what I'm concerned with is that the commit, the town council's going to have the same, you're, you're an indication of how the town's, the council's gonna go.
Great.
Uh, because, because, uh, if you look at it from a standpoint, it's like, it sounds like you're increasing sidewall height, and we aren't. We're actually allowing less sidewall height. Which is the problem that you have right now. How do we allow less sidewall height? Right now, we require all sidewall height. And we're saying is that we don't want you to feel like you have to use all the sidewall height if you come up with a design that doesn't require it.
Right, so, and Nancy, some of the, a lot of the things that you have brought up, and referred to McMansions, all that stuff is being built within code right now, too.
Sure is, yeah, unfortunate though.
That's what, yeah, I, I, I mean, like, literally, I can go up and down more streets and take more pictures, but it's, it, you don't have my, you don't have my fish, uh, uh, house in there anymore, you either do. I don't think it's in that group. That's, that's what they used to look like. That's the, that's the nineteen fifty-nine period. And everybody was upset about that house when it was built, uh, when Nick was building those too.
That's an ivory?
Yeah.
They always have the flat roof.
Yeah, most people live, that's, yeah, and that's a, that's a later round.
Well, that's an improvement.
Yeah, it is, yeah, but, uh, yeah, but the, but the other thing, so the other thing too, is, is I don't, we don't need to go forward tonight if you're not comfortable.
Well, I'm not gonna be persuaded, and I think it might, now that you've mentioned this about the council, uh, it might be good if we aren't just unanimous.
No, it won't be good, I can tell you it won't be good.
It won't.
Well, it won't be good, so I would rather wait, it would be bad, it would be bad, because, because, because-
You allow them, uh, an hour if they have the same-
No, see, the, here's the thing, is that, if, I would rather, here's the thing, is that this is easier to keep the way it is, and we will get more boxes. Alright, and, and so the only, the only way that this is gonna work is if we can, uh, we can come up with a strategy that we all agree with. Uh, because this is happening now repeatedly. And, and since we don't have design review, and, and then on two planning commissions that had design review, and it has its ups and downs, but it was easier to stop this, so that'll be tell you. But, but, uh, since we don't have design re- review, and then we only have, you know, control by rule, if our rule is getting us this, this is a bad rule.
Well, that's a point.
Yeah.
Hey, I don't, I don't know why you're so concerned about one, whether we go unanimous or not. I'm not, I'm not at all, because I think it's really gonna be on staff to explain exactly, your, your point couldn't have been better said. Here's what we're getting now, and we're getting all these complaints, and by the way, it's driving architects crazy and end users and staff crazy the way it is now. What's the downside to changing it so that we get more creative, makes staff life easier, makes architects, I mean, I, we're not gonna change people wanting modern homes, so we're not gonna change it. So the, the issue really is, is how do we make them better in terms of what's there? Uh, that's really how I look at this, and I was a big proponent of it, because I saw the, the consternation that was coming from, from everybody. We're not gonna change people's style, they, they either like it or they don't, and that's not gonna change. But at least we can make them better as neighbors and, and better in terms of design, or if you like, that style at all.
If I may, as a practical matter, just, it seems relevant at this point, procedurally, the way that it would work is we're asking for a recommendation to council, that would be a majority vote. And then it is presented to council as this is what the planning commission has voted to recommend to you. It is not presented as one person feels this way, or one person feels this way. It also wouldn't be appropriate for everyone to go, you get to represent yourselves here, would not be appropriate to go before council and say, okay, but I feel this way, I'm a group to majority, it really is one voice coming from the planning commission that is the majority. Uh, it may be appropriate, you can vote to have one person be the spokesperson, usually as the chair, if they choose to come on a complicated issue and explain to the council, this is where we're coming from, and it is-
So they won't know who voted how, and they'll just know that-
This is the public, I mean, this, this is being recorded right now, they ask, they are putting that information just like anybody else, the public. We would just ask, and it is in your training, if y'all remember the training with me, that it is the one voice of the planning commission that goes to council. And while you have, you know, if you had a spouse who wanted to come and speak as a member of the public, you sort of forfeit that by participating in the process on this detailed level.
Right.
Although council could obviously look at this.
And the only thing I'm, the only thing I'm, I'm saying on this is that, is that the spool up time on this, uh, is such that one, simplifying the presentations that we actually, kind of what, with, we're recommending is, is, and also being, being only, on the R one, uh, uh, A is, is important, to make it, make it simpler, and with the, with the understanding of what the purpose is, is to provide more flexibility with this.
Yeah, well, that's a point, but I, I think this business of setting an ugly house back another ten or even twenty feet is gonna make it a true set.
Well, that's how we're doing, that's how we're doing, though, we're, we're not, not, that's exactly, what we're not doing, that's, that's what we're doing now.
I know, but say even that doesn't.
But see, what I'm saying is that, is that what we're doing right now allows the setback to cause, to cause those. And what we're saying is that the reason, one of the reasons that, that happens is because we're not allowing the flexibility for them not to do that. So, the, what we're saying right now, if this person had come to us before, they could've come ahead with that plan and done it the way that they wanted to do it, just like that. And they wouldn't come here to appeal it, and they wouldn't have come through all the process. Alright, but because they wanted, and then they went ahead and took the hit and moved it back, alright? So, they, but they didn't have to, they could've done, they could've come up with another plan.
Doesn't look very bad, it's still looming up over the view.
But that's just the, that's the side, that's the side view that I took, like, this is the, this is not the front, the front is, the front is-
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, that's it, yeah, so, so the, the, the nuance of this is that if we don't provide them a flexibility to have only a section count, there's nothing they can do but not make the, make the height ever.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, I just hate to be part of this, but if it, uh,
Well, okay, so-
Goes to the council without, uh, any talk about who voted how.
Well, it's gonna be, yeah, we'll also, we'll see the minutes, like-
I think the only way to address what you're talking about Nancy is just to lower the overall height limit to-
There you go.
Twelve feet, or whatever.
Well, that, that would work either, because, that would make, work either, because, uh, because that would make it, well, okay, that would, yeah, that would affect all housing, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, I think we'd all like to see, uh, ranches out there, you know, the, the ranch style, or whatever, the single story, the teach privacy and all that, and that, that thing.
All those houses were knocking down ranches.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Every one of those homes, and I showed you, was on a ranch, there was a ranch there.
I believe it, yeah.
Alright, uh, so, now it's midnight, so, so, do we have, do we have, uh, do we have any consensus about, do you, you had something?
What, wait a minute, what, what do you mean consensus, I think?
I mean, do we wanna, do we wanna move ahead?
I think we wanna move to, yeah, I think we should, I guess we're still saying- Yeah, yeah, I think we should, I mean, we've spent, personally, we've spent a, a lot of time vetting this with the public, and, and especially requesting input from people, I think it would not be in the town's best interest to not have taken their, uh, input seriously, that's my view.
And it, I think it is making the absolute best of a not very great situation.
Yeah, that's a good summary, yeah.
Yeah, without overhaul, we'd better, they, you know.
Right, exactly, it, there's almost an elegance in the fact that it really does kind of get narrowed down to just the one sidewall, you know? So it's, it's really kind of collapsing everything into something that just by perception feels, feels like the architect's gonna have more control. I think the homeowners are gonna have a lot more fun in the process, being creative. And, um, feeling like they're not being limited by these arbitrary rules that really don't fit today's modern ar- architecture and their desire, and we can't control that.
And, uh, just thanks to Seth again for narrowing the focus of it, because Seth has potential to really kind of get out of control or being heavy-handed, so, Nancy, I appreciate that.
So we have three different resolutions, is that all we have to do?
Yes, and there's only one that we would need for the modification of that, right?
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just saying, if I made you the chair, if it sounded like the consensus was to not apply, um, use any amendments to either the special structures permit ordinance or the R one B ordinance, then we would have, um-
or the R one D ordinance, then we would have, um, one formal motion that would be requesting, and I'm happy to give you some suggestive language from what I hear, because it's gonna be different than what you're seeing in the staff report.
Right, so why don't we do this, just to be a little bit safer? Can, can we put this on April, uh, agenda to do then, or, or not, or not? Do we need to do that? I just wanna make sure we're very clear on what we're, you're gonna get, we're gonna get out of it, cause this goes to the council wi- without us seeing it.
It's no different than what you're seeing, though.
Okay, alright, you're just gonna make that one.
Right, it would be, it would be, it would be an amended motion, um, than what your staff report says.
She's saying worse than amended motion.
Okay, alright, alright. Are you guys?
So I can provide that suggestive language if you, if you'd like, um, which would be, I move that the planning commission adopt resolution recommending city council approval of amendments to chapter seventeen point three two, residential district R one A, of the Appleton Municipal Code, per the findings as listed in the staff report and for the reasons as outlined.
So, striking seventeen point one five and seventeen point three three.
So I move that the planning commission recommends city council approval of amendments to chapter, uh, residential district R one A, of the town municipal code based on the findings and for the reasons outlined in the staff report, right?
Seventeen point three two, right?
Yeah, seventeen, yeah, it doesn't, uh, seventeen, chapter seventeen point three six.
So are you gonna be upset if I abstain?
No, no, no.
Not at all.
I, I just, one, no, no, no.
If you wanna go, I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, here's, here's, here's what, here's what, all I didn't want you to, I didn't want, since you came to this after late, I didn't want you to feel like we were leaving you behind. That's why.
No, I just have a, my own opinion about it, and I think I've heard all the evidence, as we all have, and, uh.
Sure.
Okay, that's.
Have to agree to disagree. I understand why you're doing it the way you're doing it, and your reasoning about the setback and the juxtaposition and all.
That's why it was fine, plus in the.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanna make sure, sure you didn't feel left out.
No, I don't.
And then, and then you're voting away.
Yeah, don't.
Yeah, not just my conscience, absolutely.
Well, no, yeah, yeah, we've got lots of, uh, five ones and four threes over, or four twos over.
If it were swing vote, I wouldn't rock the vote, but if I had my way.
Well, you always have your way, you need to.
So should, should, you want it reread?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Uh, move that, I move that the planning commission recommends city council approval of amendments to chapter seventeen point three two, residential district R one A, of the town's municipal code based on findings and for the reasons as out- outlined in the staff report.
One second. Move and, move and second it, move and second it down here, alright? Um, and that would include, just, uh, just to be, uh, very clear, would also, that would, that would include a men, a, a modification to the, the staff report to eliminate the R one D in here, right?
No, you're, you're just simply recommending the one part and.
Okay, alright, good, alright, alright, let me see if that's. Okay, with that then, uh, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Alright, four one, alright, then, you have what you need? And if you need me to be there for any purpose, then let me know, or do you want me to?
Can I, I was gonna say, can, can we ask that, that if you have the time, since you, you did a great job explaining exactly what it was?
Really?
Perfect, right? Support staff and it's support, yeah, I think that'd be great, one voice.
Um, that will be the April nineteenth, city council.
Alright, alright, April nineteenth, which is a Tuesday?
Oh, uh, Wednesday as well, seventeenth.
Alright. The seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yeah.
Oh, okay, right, yeah, April nineteenth, seventeenth, okay.
Correct.
And, um, I'll go there with the idea that, uh, that you want, you want me to be, be the optional speaker, but it looks like it needs to be clarified to be a speaker, or you wanna be part of this presentation?
I would, my preference would be that y- you explain it the right way, in the way that you explained it, and I think if you wanted to take some more pictures that outlined it, I would be perfectly okay with that.
If you're visual, so.
Cause it's gonna be hard for them to see this and not get confused and not go away, and it is better, is it worse, is it this, is it that?
I think I'll, well, and I'll certainly attempt to unveil that via the staff report also.
Yeah, I won't be in the on-staff-report portion, but I'm not even on speakers for the moment, right? I need one of those speakers on the, on the aisle.
And Eric, I think you're good at, at lending perspective as to the extent of the conversation within the planning commission in the ninety months, and, and you can kinda add, add to that as well.
Okay, right, alright, very good. Alright, and, uh, yeah, we'll talk.
Okay.
Alright, very good, alright, then, uh, with, with that then, we go, we go to, uh, uh, official reports, something on there. I'll, I'll just give you a quick update, uh, I was part, because, because all, uh, ca- uh, commissions, uh, chairs were part, uh, asked be part of the interview process for police chief. I was part of that process, and that happened, uh, on Monday. And there were a group of candidates, uh, that, that we talked to, there were nine of the many commissions, uh, leaders that were part of that, plus four police chiefs from, uh, from other districts that were part of the interviews, and they interviewed seven candidates, and one ended, uh, one, including one internal. And, uh, that went very, very well, and, uh, and that's what I did for my career, so I thought, oh man, this is being flashbacked. So, so anyway, that was, that's, that's, uh, what went on, and it, and it was considered to be a very, very good, very well-run process, and, uh, all candidates were very, very, very good. So there wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't a miss in the group, so there's a, there had this one.
It's a good decision.
Yeah, yeah, and with the process of that, with the, we were only recommenders, it, uh, it, it goes to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, to, to the, uh, city manager to make the decision, and then the town council, uh, approves. So, we were, we were just there to add, to get more information and, and provide, and that's.
So it sounds like we'll have a new chief before long.
Yes, yeah, I think it's, uh, the decision, uh, it's gonna be moved along, uh, as quickly as it possibly can, because, uh, what was gonna happen is that we were narrowing it to the top three candidates, and then those three candidates were gonna come back in and talk more specifically to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, manager, and then, and then there would be a discussion there, and also some, uh, some, uh, uh, town council.
So is that, is this the first time we've undertaken this process, or this kind of process?
I, I don't know, because I wasn't here the last time, uh, but I know it's, I, I, it, it seemed like it was the first time it was on this way.
My guess, we've lived here twenty seven years, and I would say yes, from what I remember.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's a major step forward.
Yeah, a big strike.
Yeah, it was a very, very broad cross, uh, cross, uh, cut of individuals during the interview process, so it was, uh, it was, and there was an employee, and there was an employee, uh, even right there, that's part of the interview process. So, it was very inclusive, and everybody, and there was a lot of consensus on, on the, on the top three four candidates, so it was good.
Great, great. Any women?
Absolutely not, and I, and I was thinking about that too, because, uh, because of, uh, one of the, one or two of the chiefs that, uh, had been good at recruiting women into the, into their own groups. Uh, but, uh, no women candidates, no diversity, no diversity at all.
Any minority?
No, we were age diversity, that was it.
Okay, I want to work with that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, when I was talking to the agent, the, the student, student person. Alright, uh, staff report?
Um, yeah, just wanted to let the commission know that the town will be hosting an Earth Day event this year, actually on Earth Day, uh, eight, which is April twenty second, it's a Saturday, uh, the event will be held from ten to one o'clock, and we're gonna do the street closures right here in front of the town hall. Got the library involved, which is kinda cool, they're gonna be doing a lot more, you know, virtual, children-focused events and some other fun things. There would be a ecology event happening at the same time, where you can come and do e-waste, e-shred, and get some compost. And we're gonna have other environmental, uh, organizations with booths and some other fun activities, um, all sustainability, environmental basis, so, will you consent?
Was it the end of the?
It's April twenty second, um, and we've just started, um, our real deep outreach and advertising effort, so you'll probably get it in the Appletonia, you'll get some pings, uh, via email, you'll see a big banner at Marsh and Middlefield too, from the.
Was it like eleven to three or something like that?
It's from ten to one P M, ten A M to one P M.
Okay, uh, final item is, uh, is item eight for the motion to adjourn. Uh, there's a move and a second. Move, second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, alright, please.
I was gonna say aye.